...with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the planning board secretary. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anyone with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it on silent mode for the duration of this meeting. Just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Monday, August 12, 2013. Ms. Denny, here's the board.
Here.
Ms. Henry.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Seifert.
Here.
Alex Taylor.
Here.
Jennifer Sauter. Rick Lambert.
Here.
Barbara Kita.
Here. I just wanted to, just for the record, I just wanted to mention that there is, I don't see that there's an issue with people not being able to get into this meeting so that there is nobody outside waiting to get in. Looks like we have enough room. There's one thing I did want to also bring up that today, during this application, or actually, why don't we go over the agenda first before we do this? I would like to make a change to the agenda, if you guys don't mind, because of some of the members here. We'll go with the approvals of the minutes as always. We'd like to do the resolutions first so that we can take care of that, and then the application for Asbury Partners, and then some old business for 1105 Main Street. So the only thing we're changing is moving the resolutions up so we can get through those with a quorum of who's of the panel here. So approval of the minutes for June 24.
Move that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Ms. Henry.
Upstate.
Jennifer Sauter. Trudy Seifert.
Yes.
Alex Taylor.
Yes.
Rick Lambert. Yes.
Yes.
Trudy, what was the date of those minutes?
Yeah, Trudy, you can't vote on that one.
It's 24.
Twenty-four. Is that the one I missed? Oh, okay. We're okay? Okay. Let's go to the resolution, 406 Deal Lake Drive. Let's see. Motion to approve the resolution for 406 Deal Lake Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Yes.
Barbara Kita.
Yes. She just snuck in.
All right, so Yvonne is, yeah.
Do you approve?
Yes. Mayor John Moore.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
And Jennifer Sauter.
What about me?
Miss Barbara. No, Rick, you can't.
I was here.
You were here.
I was here, Rick was not.
That's all.
Okay. All right. Let's move on. We're going to 722, 724 Cookman Ave. Let's just take a look here. Hang on. All right, we have a couple of things on this one that we just wanted to get some clarity on, okay? We have item number, I think there's a question about item number four, where it says the applicant shall create and implement a maintenance plan for the rust core ten. Is that something that we brought up?
Yes, that was, it was agreed that we were going to have them provide a maintenance bond.
Okay.
Bond. And I would suggest that that bond be in the amount of $10,000.
To do that, I wrote back to everyone today, in order to do that, you have to reopen the hearing. That was not part of the conditions of approval.
But we're part of the conditions of approval to have to provide and to create and implement a maintenance plan?
Yeah, it was a plan.
Maintenance plan.
My notes didn't indicate bond.
You weren't here, were you, Jack?
I don't.
I got the notice from everybody else, it wasn't a bond.
I don't recall that there was a bond.
My recollection was that it was not a bond, but that it was a maintenance plan, and in particular, it had to be in the first six months or when the majority of the rust occurs. My recollection is not perfect.
I don't recall a bond. I have to say that.
Yeah.
Well, could they be considered part of the plan?
Then what we have to do is then we would have to reopen.
Yeah, reopen, because you're making the new condition. Bond is not what was, you know, and you have to reopen the hearing. You want to do that, the applicants have to say how your intent is.
Good.
Jason, would it involve reopening the hearing?
I mean, does the board feel that that's necessary?
No.
Well, it depends on what the maintenance plan would be.
Yeah, and they have to agree, it's not, you're expanding the condition of approval.
Could, if the resolution doesn't include a bond, could a maintenance plan include a bond, or would that also reopen it?
Probably reopen.
Okay.
Because that's just a practical way of hearing.
Well, the resolution should be memorializing whatever was agreed to by the applicant. So if we're unsure, I don't, why don't we just table this as a resolution?
Well, we can, I mean, we have the videotape, so we can certainly go back.
Sure.
So why don't we, why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Okay? All right, we're going to table number four, so we'll have to go back and get clarification on that. I think that we also had, does everyone agree with the others up to number, before number seven? Does everybody agree with five and six?
Yeah.
Okay. Now, number seven was that there was an applicant would, shall install a fixture A on both sides of the building at the height of nine feet. Some of us were not, did not recall the nine, we knew that we wanted it to be lowered, we did not recall. Jason does have the notes that say nine feet. So if everyone is okay with that, we'll leave it at nine feet, or when we're looking at the videotape for the, for the rest, we can also take a look to make sure. And I'm fine with that, too, that we can just take a second look on that.
Well, if you're going to listen to the tape, you may as well.
Yeah, exactly, since we're listening to it anyway. Okay, and then the last one was the applicant shall install glass in the residential doorway transom. From the memory that we have, it wasn't just the transom, it was the whole doorway.
The whole doorway, yeah.
So if we could just change that, Jack, to the full doorway.
Yes.
And I'm, I'm fine with the rest. I don't know if anybody else had any issues with any of the other items?
To the best of my knowledge, nineteen has not been applied with yet to this point.
They have not done that yet?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's okay, I think that that's fine, that they haven't done it yet, because they probably haven't done a number of these things. So is everybody okay with everything else? So we only have to go back to number four and seven? Okay, so we're going to have to do, all right. When I say "we," the collective "we," who is the "we"? Just.
The.
It's, the "we" is Jack?
Should I call who is eligible?
No.
Or you're just.
No, no, I would have to look at the terms in the tape and see if it was planned, if it was planned, I have to know that, and then.
Check the height.
Okay.
And then we have to motion the board to keep it, and then bring the attention of the next committee.
Yeah, if, yeah, and if, and if we feel that it was, if it actually was bond, then if, if we stated bond, then it was okay, then we're good to go with bond. But we may not have stated a number.
Yes.
Okay? All right, so we're going to put that on the side. Sorry? This is for, this is for 722 and 724 Cookman?
Right.
Okay? All right, next.
Do you need a motion to the table?
I don't.
Do we need a motion?
I don't think we do.
No, we don't?
No.
Okay. 1183 Main Street. There was one thing on this, on this, these resolutions, is number six, Jack, where it says Board Development Review, it's Board Design Review.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. That's the only thing that I saw on this one that we would have to just modify a little bit?
I'm sorry, go on.
It would be on number seven?
Six.
Number six. Oh, I'm sorry, number six, where it says, well, the last sentence, it says Board Design Review for Review and Approval, it's the, I'm sorry, it's Board Design Review, not Board Development Review. All right?
And it's all right with everyone, I changed it.
I, yeah, I, get a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Second. All right, eleven.
Well, get a vote.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Yvonne Quaiden.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Barbara Kita.
Yes.
Trudy Seifert.
Yes.
And Jennifer Sauter.
Okay. Next, 1100 Ocean, Fourth Avenue Pavilion. I had a question about this, on number five, where it says the applicant shall submit any new exterior mural proposed, propose to the city signage committee for the recommendation. I thought that that, we always send that to the, like, the Arts Council.
It's the Public Arts Commission.
Arts Commission. It's the Arts Commission. Hey.
Are you ready, do you change that?
Yes.
That's the only thought, thing that I saw here that didn't sound copacetic.
Move to approve.
Second.
And Jim Henry.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Trudy Seifert.
Yes.
And Rick Lambert.
Yes.
All right, we're good to go. All right, resolutions are done. Okay. Just, I'd like to just remind the public on this that you obviously do, we're at the point now where you have the ability to ask any questions of the professional that came up last time regarding what was, what he presented. And that's the only thing that, those are the only questions we're entertaining right now, or whatever was presented quite a while ago. Oh, when was it? June 24th. On June 24th, you can, you can question whatever was presented on June 24th from our engineer here. So please, I ask that you not be repetitive, and we can move forward.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay.
Housekeeping as well. Trudy wasn't here, she can anticipate, where obviously it's not going to be a vote tonight, Trudy at some point you're going to have to listen to that tape.
Right.
To remain comfortable with the conditions of.
Can I just clarify and question? How do we handle any new exhibits? We're not answering, they're not, got it, because it's not the testimony.
You'll go beyond scope, of course, granted.
Understood. Okay. Thanks.
Good.
For the record, my name is Jennifer Phillips Smith, I'm the attorney for the applicant this evening. Before we begin the application, I do just want to take a moment to say that over the years, I had the great privilege of working with Detective Byrd on several public matters, and her homecoming ceremony today was particularly inspirational. So just wanted to decall it to you.
I think I have a personal.
Is that better?
Yeah, that's great.
That's better, well, I'll start again then. So for the record, it's Jennifer Phillips Smith, and I was just saying that I had had the great personal privilege over the years of working with Detective Byrd, and that her homecoming ceremony today was particularly inspirational. And just on behalf of myself, my client, and our entire team, we wanted to take a moment to express our condolences to the entire city of Asbury Park, to Detective Byrd's coworkers, and to her family. Now, moving on to the far more mundane, which is diving back into our engineering testimony. On June 24th, our engineering expert, Sean Delaney, testified. I know we were here for several hours, and went through his direct testimony, the testimony by the attorney for Saw, as well as extensive public questioning. We're here this evening to just continue the questions by the public. I am presuming that there will be some limitation of people who have already asked multiple questions, and that all of their questions are already in the record and have been, have been answered.
Yes, we have, the minutes that we just approved have the questions that were already asked.
Perfect, thank you. And I do want to just put on the record that we are continuing the public notice that was done before our very first hearing, and is continued to this hearing, and will continue hereafter to the September 9 hearing. So with that, I don't have any direct questions to ask, it's really for the public to ask Mr. Delaney.
Mr. Delaney, you're still on the road, so.
Yes.
Okay, we want to, do we have to open public question? Or?
That's the purpose, if anybody has any additional questions, if there wasn't a time.
I don't think we have to move it.
Okay. All right, if anybody from the public would like, have any questions for our engineer, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Pam Lamberton, 321 Sunset Ave. I have a question about the breakaway wall. I understand that the, the design of the pool has been elevated to comply with the new requirements. Those requirements would then allow the bottom walls of the structure to break away during a storm surge. Am I right about that so far?
The, the regulations either will provide for the pool to either be a breakaway or designed, if I remember correctly from my discussions with our structural engineer, designed to meet the impacts of waves and water in accordance with FEMA and building codes.
Okay. I believe we tried to bring this up at the, with the last presenter, so now I'm trying you, so you can see if we can get an answer to this, but could you tell me about the construction of the breakaway wall, especially on the Ocean Avenue side of the building? Is it, is, does that whole bottom floor wall, is it hinged, is it, does it go up, or how exactly does the breakaway wall work? And should there be a storm surge that would in fact effectuate the breaking away of the wall, is it going to take the pool with it?
So, as I just mentioned, our structural engineer, we've had discussions on this, and we've had some correspondence with the DEP as well, and they are addressing some comments related to that, related to the DEP's questions. And for the regulations there, they have to meet the FEMA guidelines as well as building code guidelines for structures within a V-zone. The pool itself is allowed to extend below, does not have, doesn't have to be a breakaway wall as long as it is constructed to withstand the, the water forces that are anticipated, and the codes, as I understand it, have certain impact pressures and loads associated with it to design that. So they're taking care of all that, I don't know the particulars of it, because I'm not the structural engineer on it, but to the conversations, that it's all being designed that way. And that pool is, is a separate structure essentially from the building, so it's not tied to the rest of the building, which is, which is why it allows us to do, to do what we're doing, what we're being proposed, the different regulations if it's separated from the building than if it's connected physically to the building. With the building itself, all of the structural aspects of the building are, the lowest horizontal member is a foot above the, the flood zone elevation as required by FEMA. If any portions of the, of the building that are separate from the structure extend below it, they have to be breakaway, once again, under certain pressures and loads from the water scour, stuff like that, they would, as they hit a certain pressure size, then they would break away off and flow away with, with the wind, but they are not, they would be, they're connected to the structure in a different way that allows them to break away, but the overall building structure itself is elevated up and attached to piles that are being installed on the site in accordance with all the codes as well. So there's very, there's very little of the building itself around the perimeter that would be a breakaway wall for structural aspects. I think it's only a little bit, it goes down a little bit just to help maintain some of the sand along the front of the building, potentially underneath the building, but it's mostly, the building itself is really elevated up and doesn't, doesn't, the structure itself doesn't have any breakaway walls because it doesn't extend below the flood zone. I hope that, I hope that's somewhat clear.
It may, is probably just my confusion, but on the Ocean Avenue side of the building, the wall extends from ground level, which is the sidewalk, up 20 feet. So wouldn't, wouldn't the bottom half of that wall be required to be breakaway?
The, the wall, I believe, comes down to elevation 13, and then a separate portion of it is designed to break away from that elevation 13 down lower.
Okay, so how is that, how is it separated? How is it attached, or, and then how does it detach?
I don't, I don't know the actual, how, how the connections are made, that's, the structural engineer does all that in accordance with codes. As I mentioned, there are certain pressures and loads that it can withstand, and as it reaches that maximum, maximum loading from the water hits against it, then it has to, it has to break away. It can't be, they can't design it to be exceeding those loads because then it doesn't break away. So there's a maximum they can put it to, it hits, as soon as it hits that maximum, it's supposed to break away and come up, come down.
Okay, I'm envision, I'm envisioning that, and then I'm envisioning this, the metal that's going to be on, put on top of that wall to, for the ivy or whatever it is to grow up, it would, making it continuous. I'm, I, I just can't imagine how the breakaway is going to break away if.
I believe.
Vegetation and that wire mesh or whatever it is, that's going to be a trellis.
I believe all of those, those portions that are attached to the building for the wire, for the living wall, the, the wire system for the living wall and the vines to grow up, that is all being installed up to elevation 13. It will not extend down below it. The grade is next, the grade is next to the building at the lowest part, which is on the, the north side, northwestern side of the building, or at elevation 12. So the ivy will start a foot above that and grow up, which is the foot above the flood elevation. And then it actually goes higher, as you go south, the elevations against the building actually rise to get to the front entrance, which is at elevation 14.5.
Okay. I'm sorry, I am more confused now. The plant, the plant life is going to start at the 13-foot?
Say it, say it again.
The plants that are going to grow up the wall are starting at 13 feet?
That's my understanding. I know the landscape architect will be testifying next month at September's hearing, and he can provide some more, more detail on that, but I believe it's a, the elevation is 13, so it's a foot above the flood elevation for those wires to be attached to the, the structure of the building.
And will, will he be able to answer the questions then about the, the breakaway part of the, of the bottom of that wall, the 13-foot down part of the wall?
Well, that's what I just said, it will be, it's, it's being designed by, anything that's being extended down below to, to hold back any soil on either side, or material underneath, underneath the structure, or on the, the street side as we grade up, especially because of the, the ramp and the stairs to get in. Anything that's being broken or dropped down below that 13 elevation is designed to break away.
The elevations that we've looked at have shown the vegetation growing up from the ground level up, and you were talking about an irrigation system, which is another issue, but to feet to water that, I don't know.
Just for clarity, is there a slope up from the sidewalk to the building?
There is. So the sidewalk is around elevation 11, on the, the existing sidewalk. On the northwest side, on the right side of the, the page up there on the screen, it slopes up, oop, just moved it. Unfortunately, the pointer doesn't pick up on the, the screen. I'll try, I'll try and use very distinct, okay?
I mean, from, just saying that just from the questions that are being asked, it sounds as though, at least in my mind, I don't know if that's anybody else here, that we should have the structural engineer make an appearance at some point.
Well, respectfully, though, the structural engineering is what is reviewed by the building department under the.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
The structural engineer, structural engineering is what is reviewed by the building department. So when it comes to the design of the building and the structural loads, just like the electrical systems and the plumbing systems, they're all reviewed by the building department and are not necessarily the jurisdiction of the planning board to review.
And they're, and they, and they review the breakaway wall, these breakaway walls?
That all has to be reviewed by the construction department.
Okay. Then what I would ask is that, that when we get to the, when we get to the plantings and whatnot, to understand this difference of 11 feet, 12 feet, 13 feet, and the trellises, and where everything begins and where everything ends, because it sounds a little confusing without a picture for us to look at, because I agree that you see that, you see everything is in green, so you don't know what's underneath. I, I understand the question there. So perhaps when, when we do the plantings, we could get a little bit more about that.
Absolutely. Our next witness, which will be on September 9th, will be our landscape engineer.
Okay, the landscape engineer can help out with that, too.
Yes, and I was trying to pull up here the architectural renderings, and Shawna, you could just tell me if one of these is helpful. It's not going to be that one. I don't know if that's helpful.
Go back further to the front, the front view. That's the one they're looking at.
So we can have our landscape architect come in and testify as to how that, those landscaping beds will look, and maybe get a section of it.
Right, how many feet, how many feet are below, how many feet are above, where the breakaway is. Right. What's going to float down Ocean Avenue and then, 100-year storm. My, my other questions, and Mr. Serpico, you could help me with this, my other questions have to do with compliance to the CAFRA permit, and while it's not this witness's purview, it did come up, and he did address issues concerning the CAFRA permit. So I was wondering if this was the appropriate place to ask those questions, could I ask them? Jack?
Now, CAFRA, we always make all waterfront projects so.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
We always make all approvals of waterfront projects subject to compliance with CAFRA. So during the resolution, we're lying here, this project received CAFRA from the waterfront bank, we have all the things, we see CAFRA approvals on the table, and that's when that is addressed. We don't get into the CAFRA operation pool. It's always, it's always an, it's an outside agency approval, it's the applicant's responsibility to prove, just to forward the approvals and resolution compliance.
So even though it was addressed at, by this witness at a previous meeting, I shouldn't ask those questions.
They said that they were CAFRA compliant, so that's subject to them.
Okay, I did, I did Oprah the submission from I-STAR to, to DEP, which would be the, their preliminary application, and the documents that, I'm assuming, they submitted to complete the CAFRA compliance. What I got back from the, the request that I made was a mixture, and I can show it to you, a mixture of the pool club application and the fisherman's parking lot application. And I know we have been told, you have explained to us many times, those are two separate applications, but when I opened the information, looking for the, I'm looking for the documents that prove this application is CAFRA compliant, and I, I can't seem to get that information anywhere, and I have specific issues in the CAFRA permit that I'm looking for the compliance.
So just to explain, we submitted, and I apologize, I'm going to speak into the mic, turn my back to you, I know it's awkward. We submitted our package, which consisted of the documents that we've also submitted here to the board back in June. At that same time, we've also been working with the city on the revised boardwalk drawings, those went in on the same day. So if you received a mixture of the two, that, that's why, they both went in at the same time, but they are two different projects, and we'll get two different compliance letters. Ultimately, it, we don't determine whether we are compliant with CAFRA, and the city doesn't determine whether we are compliant with CAFRA, it'll be the DEP that determines if we are compliant with CAFRA. And what they do is review our plans, go through everything we've submitted, usually they come back and ask us for clarifications or additional information, we provide that, and then they issue a letter that says, we, the DEP, have concluded that you are or are not compliant with, with CAFRA. That's the, the process has been. Ultimately, it, we don't determine whether we are compliant with CAFRA, and the city doesn't determine whether we are compliant with CAFRA. It'll be the DEP that determines if we are compliant with CAFRA. And what they do is review our plans, go through everything we've submitted. Usually they come back and ask us for clarifications or additional information, we provide that, and then they issue a letter that says, "We, the DEP, have concluded that you are or are not compliant with CAFRA." That's the, the process has been for the other projects under this permit, and that's the process that we are in with the DEP now, but it hasn't concluded. We don't yet have the letter that says we are compliant. We believe we will get that letter, but the DEP is still reviewing the plans, and we're providing some supplemental information, just as we've provided supplemental information to the planning board here.
I have two concerns. One is, I think everyone in the state is aware that the DEP is terribly underfunded and understaffed, and I don't know how effective their review can possibly be on your behalf. The second is, the CAFRA permit was issued jointly to Asbury Partners and the City of Asbury Park, so the city bears a certain amount of responsibility for what is submitted, so that, in fact, the CAFRA permit is in compliance. The CAFRA permit is what the citizens of New Jersey hold on to, to make sure that any development on the waterfront in our state is done in compliance with the coastal requirements. So it's, it's simple things. I'll give you an example. You need to provide a letter from New Jersey American Water that says they can provide water for this new construction. There's a laundry list of those things that have to be part and parcel of the submission. I can't find those documents anyplace. And I've asked the city, and I've asked DEP, I have not asked you. But that's the kind of thing that I'm looking for, just...
So we have submitted the package of documents to the city, to the planning board, to the DEP. I don't know what you received back from Oprah. I can tell you that I did have a cover letter that detailed what was submitted. So if you have that cover letter, that's what we submitted.
I, no, I don't have, I don't have that letter.
Said.
Could you provide me that letter?
Sure, it's public records, you can provide that letter. I'll provide a copy to the planning board.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi.
Are you ready for me?
Yep. Just your name and address.
Madeline Monaco, I live on Ocean Avenue in Asbury Park. I wanted to have a follow-up question to Pam's question, and that is, have you done any simulations as to where that breakaway wall will go in a storm situation?
I have not, no.
Will that be a requirement? I mean, isn't that something that is part and parcel to safety of the people who live around there?
That's certainly not part of the requirements of the planning board. It's not in the checklist, it's not in the code, so we're not required to submit that.
Wouldn't it be a responsible thing to consider that? Whether or not you're required?
Ultimately, it is the construction code official that will be reviewing the construction code, and will provide what is asked and what is required by law.
Okay, so I understand that we've asked to have a structural engineer here, and you've said, "No, that's not going to happen at the planning board, it's going to happen somewhere else." Is that a public meeting where we can hear and ask questions?
No, the construction code process is a public process, certainly the documents can be Oprahd, but it is not a public hearing process.
So how do we get the answers to these questions that we're all asking about the structural aspects of that breakaway wall? How does the public get the answers to that question?
Ultimately, there will, if the planning board grants its approval, and if we get all of our other ancillary approvals, CAFRA compliance letter, any other approval that's required, we'll submit a package of documents to your construction code official, who will review it, and ultimately make a determination that if the plan complies with all applicable construction code laws and other regulations, we will get a building permit. And the building permit is the evidence that we have complied with all of the required legal standards.
So the planning board, Barbara, you've asked for the structural engineer, is that something that can be done? I understand that it's not normal.
It's really not within our purview. It's not within our purview to make that request.
But do you understand the nature of my question? I mean, we have a lot of questions about the structural aspects, and we're not going to get those answers before it goes to some other body for approval. How does that happen for taxpayers in the city?
It's actually, our construction department is the one that does this for every building in Asbury Park. It's never a public process, it's never, they have to fire, they have to go through codes and adhere to those codes and make sure that everything is safe and done correctly.
I mean, Michael, you can jump on this, but under the state MLUL, which governs what the planning board has jurisdiction over, it's simply site plan review and anything, you know, related to the site. We don't review structural engineering.
It's not, it's not the code, and this is Uniform Construction Code.
They can get the approval.
Building was being built or...
Any building.
Do you think you should have designed something to the local community that you have to...
Yes.
Say your name and your building.
Michael Sullivan, Clarkhead, it's Board Planner. In fact, just to be clear, unless there's a site plan or subdivision involved, a building permit would never have a public airing. It's simply a building code official, a construction code official reviewing it for specific standards, and as long as they meet the standards of building or structure, it's a permit. It's not something that's normally reviewed by a planning board or a board of justice.
So couldn't the public just go to the building department and get what the building codes are and see what they have to comply with? I mean, that would have access to what they're supposed to comply with.
The codes are public.
That's what I mean.
The permits are public.
Right.
And the permit files are public.
So they could get all this information before it ever goes to the building, not relate to this specific project, but what building code requirements are, and they would know that this is how this breakaway wall is supposed to be built. If it's approved by the city, then it meets those requirements, right?
They will have access to it, I'll say that.
Right.
I would just say that a project as contentious as this should have the public's questions answered about the structural. I just want to say that for the record. My other question is, have you investigated whether there's anything buried under the ground? Is there another pool buried there? Is there any other structure buried on that piece of property?
Can you turn your mic on?
So as part of the, and the last time I testified that there were three test borings that were done on the site and advanced down to, I forgot the elevations, but down below the grade. In those test borings, they did not determine or discover, from my recollection, anything that was buried underneath there. I know there were comments from the board engineer and the objecting attorney about test pits related to the stormwater system. I went back in the file, I was incorrect in that I didn't have information that their test pits were performed on the site, in fact, they were done. And in those test pits, there was some information regarding some structures that were existing on the site below grade. The extent of it only have is from where those test pits that we examined related to stormwater system and what was found in those regards. My understanding is that if they conflict with anything that's being built on the site, that those materials will be excavated and removed from the property. I don't know the full extent of that, that's something the applicant and his construction team haven't shared with me yet on that. But if it impacts with anything that's being constructed, those pieces will be excavated and removed.
Okay, thank you. And I'm trying to remember, last time on June 24th, I know we discussed light and noise mitigation, and I'm trying, forgive me, I'm trying to remember the testimony for the noise mitigation. What exactly is it that you're trying to mitigate with respect to noise? What kind of noise are you trying to mitigate, and what's being done for that? Did we discuss that last time? I think we did.
I don't, oh, go ahead.
I don't think we discussed noise mitigation.
No, no, I'm looking at the, yeah, I'm looking at the minutes, and I don't see anything regarding noise.
I believe the testimony so far has been we would be complying with all applicable codes regarding noise, which is ultimately governed by state law.
So my question is, what kind of noise are you expecting to be emitted at the site?
And this, the answer is that this was not this expert's testimony. There was no, to my recollection, there was no testimony about noise mitigation.
Will we be having someone else that we can ask the same question to?
I believe the architect did talk, I believe the architect did, correct, I thought that the architect did address noise issues, sound issues.
Will the planner be addressing what is going to happen inside this pool club that will be emitting noise? We haven't heard anything about what your plans are in terms of hours of operation, what events are going to happen. We've asked those questions repeatedly, and we have not gotten an answer to that. Will your planner be answering those questions?
So we still have at least two more witnesses to go. I understand the frustration of thinking that we're not answering questions, it's just that it's, if we're devoting four or five hours to each witness, it's just, we can't, we can't get to the witnesses who have your answers until we finish this witness.
I understand that, but I'm asking, will your planner be addressing?
As I sit here, I have not gone over what the planner is going to testify to next month. So I don't know if he's addressing those or not, but I will take your comment under consideration.
Okay, I would have thought that you would have prepared that for the June 24th meeting in anticipation that you might have the landscape and the planner present. So you haven't seen that testimony yet? You don't know what the hours of operation or anything?
Right now, we're going way beyond scope this year.
Okay. I'm just following up on the response that I got.
Yeah, well, question, this witness is someone here who tells about engineering.
Correct.
Obviously, if there are more questions, after hearing questions from the public and the board wants answers to, you'll provide that information.
Okay, then I will request that we talk about noise and what's going to happen in the future.
Just so that you're also aware that the board also keeps track of a lot of the things that people say, and a lot of things that are, all the comments, we have the minutes, we have AP-TV. Be sure to understand that we look at these things. And it's still a long way before we have all of our requirements and things that we're going to be asking for, but that's why we appreciate you coming, we listening, so that these are things, some of these things are things that we would not think of. That's why we appreciate that the public come and we take notes.
Thanks, those are my questions.
Joyce Grant, 1701 Ocean Avenue. I want to know whether an environmental impact assessment has been done?
I didn't prepare one. I don't know if one was done or not.
You didn't prepare one?
Wait a second, is this engineering?
The questions tonight have to be based on the testimony that the witness gave.
Well, I'm asking a question of an environmental engineer.
He's not, he's, he's an engineer from...
Civil engineer.
I'm the site civil engineer.
He's not an environmental engineer. Were you here at the last meeting?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you?
Were you here at the last meeting?
Yes, I was. And this is an environmental question?
I get that, but he is not an environmental person. The questions tonight have to be based on the testimony he presented to the board at the last year.
I thought that, what was last time? Wasn't it, didn't it have to do with environmental engineering? Am I, maybe I'm really going, you know? Well, you know, I'm basing this on what I remember from the late...
I was here, I can't, I can't give you the answer you're looking for, other than that your questions have to relate to the testimony.
Well, I thought this was related, all right? All right. All right, I want to talk about the pipe, the overflow pipe that is going into Deal Lake. That I remember, right?
We may testify to it or not, he'll let you know.
All right? I want to ask whether or not the Deal Lake Commission was consulted on this.
I have not consulted with them, no.
All right, thank you. And one more question. You said something about the, you have handicap access, but you're not ADA certified, is that true?
I don't believe, I don't believe I said anything about ADA certification. I talked about ADA accessibility to the building, and that we have two access points, and the architect also talked about this as well. There are two access points of the three ingress points, ingress and egress points of the building that are ADA accessible to get into and out of the building.
They are handicap accessible?
They are ADA accessible, yes.
All right, I know, I remember that. But I thought I heard you say they weren't ADA certified.
I'm not sure if the ADA certifies anything. They have guidelines that we have to design to.
All right. And you must be aware that your neighbors at 1701 Ocean Avenue are all seniors. It's a senior zone building, and there are a lot of handicap and disabled people there. So I feel that that's a very important thing to be certified for the American Disabilities Act. All right, that's it?
I just want to clarify something, and I, because I heard this at the last meeting, and I don't know whether it was the architect's or, but I just, from our vision, what they've done is they've created an access that isn't technically a ramp, but meets the ADA requirement. The load, the weather, what can constitute a ramp. They don't keep railings and things like that, it's a sloped walkway. They've increased the access, so it's not technically a ramp, is what I think they're saying.
It's not technically what? I'm sorry.
A ramp.
A ramp.
So it's nicer than that, it doesn't have to look with all of this stuff there.
But at any rate, it isn't certified.
It will be, it's better.
It will be certified.
It's better than a ramp.
Okay.
It's better than a ramp.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I am Barbara Cutler, 1501 Ocean Ave. I just have a quick question and follow-up to the prior breakaway wall comments and concerns. I'm unaware of any other structure in Asbury that currently incorporates a breakaway wall. So I guess my concern is, are there, is there a comprehensive set of codes within the city guidelines addressing breakaway walls, how they break away, in what direction they break away, and what will be impacted in this case if it breaks away? Or are these regs and codes being developed on an ad hoc basis because this is the first breakaway wall that Asbury has had to address?
So just, the Uniform Construction Code, UCC, is a statewide code, and it's comprehensive, it looks like a phone book, it's extraordinarily technical, and it applies statewide.
And can the folks up there address whether there are town codes relevant to breakaway walls and their impact and direction?
It's building, so we would not, that's not our purview.
Would that be something we would be able to find out?
The city doesn't have such codes. It's all governed by state code on the construction. So it's a state law, it's...
So the same standards apply to all shore beachfront construction?
Whatever type of breakaway wall, there's, I'm sure there's a section in the code that addresses it.
Okay, thank you.
Tracy Rogers, 1034 Sewell Avenue. I had the pleasure of interviewing, you know, questioning the architect, and there was some questions that he said that you would be able to follow up on. One, since this project is a major development by DPA standard because of the structure and amount of acreage, how much, where would the connection from the new building be when you're creating bathrooms and the water mains and the sewer? How much concrete or structural will you have around that? And let me add another thing into it. The pool structure, is there going to be concrete around the pool structure and how it's put in there?
Okay, let me start with the major development comment. The term major development in my line relates to stormwater, and that relates to a criteria whether you have a quarter acre new impervious coverage on a site or an acre of disturbance. So in this case, you also look at, we can look at the entire waterfront development as the development, because it's all permitted through CAFRA and all the stormwater regulations. We're compliant for the entire waterfront redevelopment area, not necessarily on a piece-by-piece, lot-by-lot basis. So the site, we have determined, we've agreed that it is a major development by DEP's definition right now, which wasn't in place, I don't know if it was in place back when the original permit, it was right on the borderline when they developed the new regulations. So as a result, we have to comply with certain standards related to stormwater only, groundwater recharge, water quality... Groundwater recharge, water quality, and runoff quantity discharged from the site. Storm report that I, that I prepared, we prepared, and I testified to you last time, because we are discharging to a tidal water body, ultimately, the ground, the stormwater quantity requirements do not apply. The groundwater recharge, we're in a planning area one, and by the state's definition, does not have to comply with groundwater recharge requirements for that. And then with regards to water quality, that would comply, but the stormwater system for the entire waterfront redevelopment area was, as part of the CAFRA permit that was approved over a decade ago, incorporated water quality measures to handle the runoff from the entire waterfront. So they've had some manufactured water quality devices that are spaced throughout the streets prior to discharging into the adjacent lakes and ultimately to the Atlantic Ocean. And they treat the water that runs off from all the properties in the site. So it's all the water quality has been accounted for, for all future build-out based upon the approved CAFRA permit. So what we are doing is, as I testified to, a comment that came back from the TRC committee during the process for this application, they had asked if we could look into possibly recharging some water on the site. We're not required to do it, so as a good effort of good faith, we put a pipe in there that could take the roof runoff from the building and discharge a portion of it back into the ground. And then as the larger storms come, it would spill over and connect into the inlets that are in the street, which then ultimately discharge through the storm, the city collection system through the roads to the water quality structure prior to discharging into Deal Lake.
I'm a little bit slow.
That's okay.
So let's go back. Couple of things. First, you said the runoff that, you know, you're going to do, that you're not required to do. Well, let me, let me, let me take that back, because you made two statements. One, you said the impervious was the whole body of Asbury Park. But when you talked about it, you said, we meet an 80% standard, if we take away the, the wood, we're, we're at another different level. So why are you individually saying we're 80% on one particular site if you're quantifying that we've made it to the whole site?
The, the DEP, the CAFRA permit put a maximum impervious coverage of 90% through the entire waterfront development. So we're allowed up to 90% on our site.
Well, I thought it was 80%.
It's nine, nine, we're allowed up to 90, based on, based on the cumulative total throughout the entire development. Now, there are a lot of parks and open spaces where you have very minimal, and some spots where the previous coverage goes a little higher because of those open spaces that have been added to route. It's a comprehensive design for everything, so it's not, so you can't look at just one piece essentially, you have to look at the whole pieces together, what the approved plans have. So we had, we had allowed up to 90% on our site based upon a 90% requirement for CAFRA. We are less than that, I think we were down at 78, I believe, or something like that, if we included the wood decking. And we were being conservative in that, because we didn't know how it would be looked at. I believe that since the water can go through it, it probably should not be counted as impervious surfaces. And therefore, our, our impervious coverage drops significantly below that, down to almost 30, 35% on the site. But that also takes into account the two concrete walkways that are on the north and south sides, and some other, you know, the building itself on, on site as well. So we are, we have less impervious surface on here than, than could have been imagined with the sum of the entire development of 90%, you know, 90% total for here. So we're less than, less than what we could put maximum on the property.
I'm still getting, when you say that if we took the wood away, and you don't think it should be because it can go through, what, what other option is there? Would you could say that, alternative that would, you would think would totally be something that is, that meets that 78%? You have to have something, right?
If, if in case, if you have to want to put a concrete decking on top of it.
Yeah.
They could, they put concrete out there that wouldn't infiltrate on. So that, that would be an impervious surface.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, we, we approved the decking as an option and assumed it would be impervious as a worst-case scenario.
But as your opinion, you think it shouldn't be, but it is because it's wood and you can't go through, but you have a little slack. But, you know, you stated your opinion that we're, we're in there. But now, what about the concrete or the structural balance inside? Are we using any concrete below this for pools or piping or, you know, protect the piping against anything?
I don't know how the, the internal piping system is done, yet the, the mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineer for, for the project that's bound by the building codes is, is taking all that. I pick their, their pipes up from out, once they exit the building and come in, or exit the structure and come outside to connect into the public right-of-way utilities.
I'm talking about under.
I understand. I don't know what, in terms of the piping for the building, I don't know, because that's not my, it's not my field. In terms of the pool, I know the architect testified that it'd be, I believe the pool would be embedded, and there'll be a concrete shell around the pool. And then some of the discussions have been coming up about the breakaway nature of it. It's designed towards building codes. It will be concrete around it, so the pool obviously is, no water will go through the pool into the ground.
Exactly, so we do have concrete, so when you, when you say just the, the fact that we're at 78, but you didn't calculate the structure of the concrete that's going to be under it because of the pool, you don't know what structure we're going to be looking at on piping as, as it goes in? And so we don't know really if you're technically meeting that 90, that 90% impervious surface.
Mr. Dillon, just so we can clarify the record, when you made a determination as to how much impervious coverage may be on the site, did you take the most conservative estimate when it came to using, looking at all this area here? Did you treat that as impervious?
I, I included everything that was not dirt or sand, or sand as impervious surfaces.
And even with that methodology, did you still determine that the site would have less than 80% impervious coverage?
Less than 90, yeah.
Okay, less than 90.
But you just, but you just said you don't know what's going to go on with the piping, the structure coming out to the street, how they're going to structure it, how they're going to build it, what, what cost of destruction or concrete is going to need. So you still have more things that can go in that you said you don't know.
I, I don't understand how piping is related to the impervious coverage. I just, I'm not understanding.
Well, I mean, the structure on the piping coming in and building, you know, when you're building down there, you're going to have to make sure that there's a structure like the pool, that you can't puncture things, you can't move things, and, you know, water coming in with the structure. You just said that you don't know how they're going to do it because you're not there, so how would you calculate numbers?
The, the impervious coverage is only what's at the surface. It doesn't count for anything underneath. So if, if at the surface, if water can't, can't penetrate the surface and get into the soil underneath, then it's, then I'm counting it as impervious surface. If it can, then, then it does. So all of the decking, as, as Ms. Smith pointed out, all the decking, the pool, the building and the concrete sidewalks and everything that you walk on, it's not either planted with grass or sand that were remaining, remaining on the site, was counted as impervious coverage for the, for the analysis, as a worst-case scenario.
So impervious only, only deals with the top surface when you put in a pool, when you put, say, five feet of concrete, five feet of concrete. I, I think that it creates impervious surface for water going down.
It does, it stops it at the surface. That's why it's impervious, it runs off because it's on the surface, it prevents it from going directly into the ground. If it hits the surface, it has to travel along the surface before it gets in the ground, that surface is considered impervious.
No, what I'm saying is, you have another level that you said the, the planks and wood are going down, and then you're going to have a pool surface that's going to have concrete. So in a major storm, you're actually stopping the water from what it's supposed to do is to go into the waters, because you have created a concrete surface.
I think this has already been answered.
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, he did. He included all of the impervious surface in his calculation.
And I, and I'm questioning the difference between when it comes down, it goes through the boards, and you have another surface of concrete there.
No, no. The pool, the pool, the edge of the pool will come down vertically. The edge of, the pool itself doesn't come out underneath the boards.
Well, I don't know.
I'm telling, I'm telling you, it doesn't come under the boards. It's either going to be, the decking on top is the surface, and then underneath that will be soil.
What about bathrooms?
That's all covered by the building on top of there, which is all accounted for and accounted for as impervious surfaces. It's a building, it's a structure, no, any water on, hits there will be collected by drains, that'll be piped through roof drains out to the, that pipe that's, that I mentioned earlier.
It will be carried through.
Yes. It will, that will not go into the ground until it gets into the, the pipe that we are proposing along the front.
The pipe that you're proposing.
Yes.
Do you have, do you have another question? Because I think that we've been here around this a couple of times. Do you have another question?
Yeah.
Okay.
You said that another engineer will be dealing with DEP on waves and issues, dealing with that structure. Where, was that information, it's basically a negotiated dialogue between that engineer and DEP as to what their standard's going to be?
I think that we've answered that also. We've also answered that, that's, it's a state code. It's not, it's not a negotiation, it's a state code.
Well, the way he said it is, they're going to be talking about what the standards are, and, you know.
Yeah, and if they don't meet the standards, they won't be approved.
Or they can negotiate to say what they are.
No, no, it's a standard. It's a code. You have to, you have to comply with the code. This is not a negotiation.
No, but when you walk in, you know what the codes are, then you don't have to negotiate, you don't have to talk, you walk in, you know what the standards are, so they're a code.
All right, what's your question? Tell me what your question is.
Oh, we're going to the next.
Okay.
Before the FEMA, the FEMA, Matt came in, did you read the plans as to what was supposed to be built? And what was the difference after you knew FEMA regulations?
Is that an engineer question?
Ultimately, whatever the FEMA standards are, we're complying with them.
You're complying with the new.
We're complying with whatever FEMA standards we have to comply with. We will comply with them.
Well, it's only asked because when the architect had made a comment that it could be built a certain way, and then he was corrected, and we were not determining.
We don't actually, we don't, we don't have to tell us why.
Okay. How much, how much drainage do you expect that will affect the water coming off the waste, waste management system that will affect the interest of north?
Are you talking about the sanitary sewer?
Yes.
Sanitary? I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. We are connecting into the city system, we are, we are working with the, the city and their consultant for approval of our system. But I do know as part of the CAFRA permit that was approved, the entire site, the treatment plan was upgraded, and there was sufficient capacity in the plant to handle the flow from our, our development. So it's just a matter of us connecting into it, and then getting, giving us the, the approval for that connection based upon their review, pending any comments they have.
Right now, you continually said that the waste management system was put in prior with CAFRA report and everything else. And this is just a personal question. Do you know what all those connections are, if they were ever put in, and if this is done?
Just so, are we talking stormwater or?
Stormwater.
Okay, because the, I think the question Sean just answered was about wastewater, sanitary sewer.
No, I'm going to stormwater now. But he said all the, the structures that were put in prior, do you, you actually worked off those, those numbers?
I, I have looked at the, the approved plans and the documents for the system and determined where the flow was going, and I've looked at our connection points for the flow that we are generating. I know the, your board engineer had asked, had asked that question as well for flows coming off the site that are going into the pipe systems and conveyance, and we provided that information to him.
Okay, so you, you have looked at those?
Yes.
And, and, you know, I, I was just wondering, you just kept on saying, sometimes people say what, what, what they think is there, so there is a plan that you ran off because you saw what the original structure is?
Yes, that's, that's, I have to, I have to know where, where everything goes, because if it doesn't go the right spot, or if it goes a different spot, I have to analyze it differently. So I have to figure where the ultimate, our falls are, so I can determine how, how the plan, how our design is compliant with the overall approval.
The last question is, do you know the overall amount of concrete that's going to be used for the, the next structure under?
For the next structure?
Under the boardwalk, the board, the planks.
Under, on our site?
Yes.
I believe there's not going to be any concrete underneath the, the planks. They're putting, they're putting the boardwalk in, and that's going to be mounted, you know, supported by the piles that are going in through a system there. So the only, the only concrete that I'm aware of, besides the building and the two walks, is what the pools, this is the pool. Yeah.
Are you 100% sure?
That's from the information, from the information I've been given, that's, that's what I, that's, that's, that's what I know.
Hello, good evening, folks. Warner Baumgartner, Fifth Avenue.
All right, you've already come up before.
Yes, I have.
So.
New material.
I'm hoping this is new.
Absolutely.
This is new questions.
Let's, let's get into some engineering.
All right.
What utilities are going to be serving this site?
Water, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, gas, electric, and then some kind of telecommunications.
Okay. Everything below grade, or is anything above grade?
Everything is below grade.
Okay. Which of these utilities did you have a hand in designing or implementing into this, into this building?
Well, I, I've run all of the facilities from the street to the building itself.
All of those utilities?
Based on coordination with the architect and the mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineers that do the interior of the building, who size all those facilities, they stub them outside, outside the building, in which case I, I show the connections from those points out to the existing facilities in the street.
Okay. So on that diagram, that's conveniently up there, I see the utility area, what I would consider the utility area to be the southern part of the building, would that be kind of accurate to, to say? Where the elevator core is? That's where all your utilities come in?
There are, there are two locations. The water and sanitary and gas are coming in on the southern, southwestern corner of the building, and the electrical is coming in, electrical is coming on the northwest, northwesterly corner.
Oh, I see, interesting. So where is the main electrical vault or electrical panel, in the northwest corner there?
There's a transformer on the northwestern corner, and then it comes into, into the building, or either mounted on the outside of the building somewhere there, and then comes into, into an electrical room.
Got you, got you. So you have a step-down power transformer there from the mains and service the building on the interior then?
However, they, they do it electrically, it's not my, not my field, but I run the lines.
And I'm curious about the elevator tower. Is that concrete all the way down to grade? Is that on pilings? Or is that somehow suspended in the same nature as the pool being suspended?
That, I know it's, the architect talked about that, structural in terms of how it's supported. I know it's being supported by piles, and the design is per, per code, per, per design meetings we've had, it's been designed in accordance with the proper building codes.
Okay, you, you can't testify as to whether it's sunk into the ground or supported.
I don't know what the, I don't know what the depths are, but it's, whatever depth it is, it's been designed to code.
Okay. What type of elevator is it? Is it a cable hoist elevator, or is it a hydraulic elevator?
That's not me.
That's not you?
That's not me.
All right. So, so on the southern part of the building here, where is the utility area? Where do all the other utilities come in, aside from the electric, which we've already discussed?
Coming to the, into the, there's a room in the, right in that, where the cursor is right there, there's a room right there where all the, where the water room, I believe, and the gas comes outside the building.
Well, that's the elevator, isn't it? Where that little hand is now, that's the elevator.
The elevator's to the right of that.
To the right of that?
That's the elevator right there.
Got you, okay, so the little square.
The bigger room is the, is the utility room.
Okay. So when you designed all the utilities to fit into this building, I'm kind of trying to figure out what came first, the chicken and the egg. Were you Were you given a site plan and then designed utilities to fit it? Or did the location of the utilities in the street dictate the design of the building?
May I, may I ask the relevance of the question?
The, the relevance...
What would sway you one way or another that you're asking?
The relevance is the form of the building as we're being presented. I'm wondering whether it was dictated by the location of the utilities in the street versus, for example, if this, if this utility area and elevator tower could perhaps be on the northwest corner of the building without changing anything else, right? That would present an entirely different view to the buildings across the street, to the public in general, right? Because you'd have a two-story addition in the northwest corner as opposed to the southwest corner. So I'm trying to determine, is there something locking this in from the utility context that the utilities and the elevator core and all this stuff has to exit the building and connect to the street in the southwest corner?
The answer to that is no.
Okay. So this could be redesigned if somebody were to want to, to put all that stuff in the northwest corner or possibly even in the, in the northeast corner, correct?
Our architect testified as to why the building was designed in this specific manner and he did design, testify as to why the elevator was placed in that location. All that was previously testified to and not by this witness.
Well, I don't believe he testified as to why it was put there. He just said it's put there, not why it's put there. But I got my answer, I, I, I've got my answer to the question. That utilities, location of the utilities did not dictate the form of this building and where the core and elevator are located. Thank you very much.
Good evening, excuse me, Catherine Murphy, Deal Lake Drive. These, this question may or not, may or not, may or may not come under the purview of this witness, but in looking at page or sheet number 413 of the Bowman Consulting drawings, it indicates that during construction, that 12, a 12-foot wide area which would really encroach on where the boardwalk will be, where the new boardwalk or the existing boardwalk will be built back to, that the 12-foot wide area to be, will be leased temporarily from the city during construction, as well as lot 124, which is adjacent to the north, will be used as the construction material staging area. So my question in, in other conversations, it's been, I believe testified that the estimated construction time for the beach club is 12 to 18 months. We're being told that the boardwalk will be built back by the beginning of next summer season. So how will this construction impact access on the boardwalk? And in addition, there's still a question in my mind at least, is lot 1.24 a green acres lot? We know it's a city-owned lot. So those are just some of the questions that I have and then in terms of those questions, is the city going to be compensated for the leasing of those areas?
And I have a, a pretty simple answer to that is, at the last hearing, we testified that we would be changing the construction phasing plan to eliminate the use of block 1.24 and the boardwalk. And in fact, since that time, we did submit a new construction phasing plan that no longer uses any of 1.24 and no longer uses any of the area that will be where the public boardwalk is.
This is the document that Pam and I Oprah did, that we just received, that we submitted to CAFRA for the two compliance letters. So that's why I'm confused.
Then that was the original plan, that was the plan that was originally submitted to the planning board, but based on the public hearing process and discussions, we have revised that plan to eliminate the use of 1.24.
So how would we access, if we're trying to Oprah current documents that are relevant and we've received these, where are the documents that are relevant?
So when you Oprah, you're going to get all of the doc, you get the documents we submitted initially and you submit, you would also get revised documents. If you put in an Oprah request, I could tell you that there is a revised drawing dated, submitted August 1st. That eliminates the use of block 1.24, which was the testimony on June 24th, that we would eliminate block 1.24 from the construction phasing.
So those were submitted on August 1st?
Correct, they've been revised.
And they've been submitted to the planning board? They were not resubmitted to DEP yet?
But they will, the next submission that goes to the DEP will reflect that revision.
Okay, thank you very much. Very good. Well, I'm very familiar with Oprah, it's just that these didn't correlate to what we were talking about.
And over the course of this hearing, we do hear things in the course of the hearing that where we say, you know, maybe there's a different way, let's revise, let's respond to the comments from engineers, respond to comments from the public. And that is one thing that's been revised, is block 1.24 will not be used for construction phasing.
Yeah, where will the construction be staged?
There is an existing construction trailer on 1.25, which is the next block over. That construction trailer is already there and should this plan move forward, that will be the lot that is used and that is a privately owned property.
One more quick question, Pamela Everton, Sunset Avenue. The amount of, of your service, surface that you're allowed is determined by the Office of Smart Growth. At the time the CAFRA permit was issued, the, you were only allowed 80% and that was because Asbury Park was applying to become a CAFRA urban center. And I don't recall, was, did Asbury Park receive that designation and I don't know who I'm asking that question of, but...
I, I don't know what the designation, I just know the CAFRA permit that was issued indicated that the, the, there are two sections of the, of the redevelopment plan that were analyzed. The one, the prime redevelopment area was grant, was approved with a 90% and then the area further to the west had a, had a lesser, I don't know what, I don't know what that number was, but had a reduced, reduced number off of that. But 90% in the area that we are developing was, was permitted.
Not, not unless Asbury Park had that urban, the urban center designation. I can show you right in the, in the permit. So I was just wondering, maybe Mayor Moore knows, maybe Mike Mandella knows, that kind of, it would be, it would behoove us then to get that information. Probably the city planner knows, I, I don't know. But that, without that designation, it's, you're only allowed 80%. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else? Okay.
Hi, Ernest Mingoli, 400 Deal Lake Drive, Asbury Park, New Jersey. So to the engineer, you, you went through some pretty rigorous, I don't want to call it back and forth with the attorney for Waterfront, last meeting, you call that?
Yes.
That was pretty vigorous, wasn't it?
It was okay.
Okay. I'd like to say that I think from the public's point of view, he may have gotten a little bit of the best of some of the data.
Question.
Yeah, that is a question.
No, no. We have another application we have to hear.
Are you aware that he's an EPA lawyer?
I, I am not, I understand he deals primarily with environmental regulations, but I do not know his, his expertise.
Okay, he, he is probably one of the foremost EPA lawyers in the state. Well, wait, wait.
What's the question?
You gotta ask questions, this isn't a dialogue. Ask your questions.
You know, are you gonna keep doing this?
Yes, yes, yes.
Oh boy, and they're gonna join in. Isn't this great? That's why this pool is gonna get built, because you know what? It's always gonna be the citizens versus the board, versus the mayor, versus the attorneys. That's just the way it's gonna be.
It has to be related to testimony.
Okay. So, so he was asking you questions about undergrading, you know, that pretty significant questions about testing and compliance, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I'm wondering why he's not here tonight because he really seemed to, don't you feel that he's...
You should ask him why he's not here. We can't tell you why he's not here.
Don't?
We don't know why he's not here.
Mr. Engineer, Mr. Engineer, do you feel? What do you think?
I don't know, I'm asking you a question, don't be cute. Answer my question.
What do you mean?
Were you here?
I'm always here.
Okay. If, if you were here, that attorney knew what was going to happen this evening, said he was going to be out of the country, I believe, and he consented to this. So the attorney was fully on board with what's going on this evening procedure. So that you hear him say that?
I hear a lot of things.
No, I'm not running the meeting, I'm the attorney for the board, Rita, as you know, and it's my job to keep the thing on the track.
In your, in your estimation of what's on track?
Never mind, I, I can't deal with this witness, this question.
Witness?
You don't just ask questions.
Please, please get to the question.
Okay. So he basically, are you aware he raised some very significant basic questions about testing?
He asked questions and I responded to the questions he asked and at the end, he completed his cross-examination of myself.
Okay. And, and you are aware that he's an EPA lawyer?
What's the question?
That is the question.
That, it's irrelevant. Whether he is or not.
Says the board chairwoman, next question.
What's the next question? What is, what is, what are you getting at? We're, we're happy to answer it, just what are you getting at? What's the question?
I'm, I'm trying to get at the fact that the, the lawyer for the opposition to this pool may be conflicted and I'll tell you why. He's a resident, I believe, of North Beach. He owns a unit in my building. He's also an EPA lawyer. He's also been hired by the opposition, which is the Waterfront. So it seems to me that this is kinda like quite a, a little gathering we have here of, of professionals, engineers, lawyers, et cetera. Now, Mr. Serpico is gonna say, what does it all matter? Well, no, you know, it does matter a lot because, because if you look at the job that that lawyer did in my building, the sand tender, now you're gonna say, well, this lawyer is gonna have an impact on questioning of you, the engineer. And, and I, and I think the only reason he's putting you through a rigorous questioning is because he's hired by people who live three floors and below at North Beach. So in other words, what appears to be going on here is about engineering and lighting and, you know what it's really about? It's about certain people who are gonna be impacted negatively by this, particularly the person, people in North Beach who live three floors and down. It's by residents, owners like me who already, well, okay. Well, okay, Ms. Chairman, you want me to stop?
No.
Oh, you do?
What, 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 what you're saying right now, I understand, it's a comment about, and that, those comments can be done and should be done during the comment portion of the meeting.
And when is that?
That is after all the presentations are finished.
Isn't that great? Okay.
Yeah, that is, that's, that's, that's the process. Comments are at the end of the presentation of, from all the professionals and then you can comment and state that.
And I'll make one last comment to the, one question to the, one question.
Is your question?
Question? I don't know what that means, Mayor, you know, you're having a good time with the sign language.
I have a good time listening to you on the side.
You know what it is, Mayor? You have to understand, a lot of people sitting out here, we're homeowners, some of us are seniors, some of us are disabled. And can I tell you something? Well, let me wait a minute.
Alright, what's the question?
I can't figure out what side you're on, sir.
What, sir?
I can't figure out what side you're on. That's what's confusing the hell out of me.
What's your question?
Why, you're not confused, people?
What's your engineering question?
My, my engineering question is related to the, the compliance with the testing. You said that you felt that you answered all the questions appropriately. In other words, enough to go forward. Is that in fact your testimony?
That was my testimony. Last time I did testify, today my question was raised about the testing procedures that it, that I was incorrect, that some additional testing that I did not have in my possession or wasn't aware of was done and some, some information, additional information was provided to the board in the supplemental application that was requested by, as well as by the board engineer.
And provided to Mr. Lieberman.
Last question. You, you just mentioned that you talked about some possible, someone asked the question about is there anything underneath this site? And you said, listen, we did three borings and as far as we're concerned, there's nothing under there that would impede the project and if there was, we would deal with that. But what if it's something like major contamination or disturbing of a water table?
Well, the, the water table, we'd be determined was not anywhere, anywhere near the improvements that we were building, so I don't believe that the water table will be impacted by it. If there is any contamination on the site and the applicant has, I believe, retained an environmental consultant to investigate that prior to us even beginning this work, anything that does have to be removed will be removed in accordance with state regulations.
Okay. And one other question, have you ever visited this site after, like we had, I don't know, a few weeks ago, three mini storms come through, one right after the next. Have you ever visited the site during an event?
I, I have not, I have not had the pleasure actually of doing that.
Alright, thank you. It's not a pleasure, trust me.
Anything else? Alright. Motion? Second. Okay.
Aye.
Alright, we have to do a motion for, we need a motion to carry.
Can we ask questions? Okay, it just, it came up at the last meeting because of the new north ramp. Okay, I brought it up and Michael thought it was a good suggestion, that you're building this new north ramp, you make it sturdy enough by putting a rebar, whatever, so it'll hold a fire truck.
We, we, I believe we had testified that yes, the, we would, that it was being designed reinforced, thicker with reinforcing to support the weight of emergency vehicles that needed to travel on it.
Thank you. So that when we finish this up, that's gonna be part of the resolution. Thanks.
Alright, we're looking to, can I get a motion to carry this application without notice for to, what are we at, September 9th?
Correct.
Is the next date?
So moved.
Without further notice. Carry to the September 9th.
Someone second it. Someone second it.
That's correct, we can, will consent to beyond September 9th.
Alright, so the motion is to carry this application to September 9th without further notice?
So moved.
Aye.
Okay.
And we will be contacting the, we're presuming that we are not going to finish on September 9th, being that we still have at least two more witnesses and we understand there's a witness that will be brought in by SAW.
Okay.
So we will contact the board secretary about perhaps reserving either October 21st or October 28th.
We, we have already, we've had that discussion to do it on October 21st, is that correct?
Yeah, I think, I want to...
That's, that's between you, you figured it out. And we won't do any motions towards that yet.
Correct. I want to make sure, it, it's Mr. Lieberman and he'll be his witness, so I want to make sure before we formally carry it, but I think just planning ahead, though, we're looking to have one of those dates for the beach club.
So that's not, that's not written in stone yet, we'll, we'll announce whatever it is on September 9th.
Correct.
Okay? Alright, thank you very much, the public for coming. We need a, did you say we need a moment's recess? Can we just get two minutes of recess, please? Five? Five-minute recess?
Motion to recess.
Second.
For five.
Aye.
Here.
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 Here. Okay.
Okay.
This is for 1105 Main Street.
LLC Mark Steinberg on behalf of the applicant.
Could I interrupt for a second?
Certainly.
And just because to save everybody a little bit of time. And correct me if I'm wrong, this is a continuation of the last meeting where you couldn't hear it last because it wasn't notified or anything and because of the change in plans, you needed a time extension. I voted against the change in plans, not because it's a great deal, I was just harking. As far as giving a time extension, this is no brainer. They're gonna, they want to get open next week, forget like six months from now, so if they're asking for another... So if they're asking for another six months, let's just get right to the chase and vote yes and get it over with.
We're asking for extension, yes, thank you, to March, what did I ask for? I asked for March 31st, 2020, which is slightly over six months. And we feel that we'll bring it in before then. But between the redesign, the interior architecture, the permitting, and the actual leasing and building it all out.
I know you'll bring it in before then because you're doing a great job.
Yeah.
You're going like crazy. You make money, the quicker you open it up. City makes money, the quicker you open it up. So I mean, again, this is a no-brainer. So I think there's only so many of us can vote on this.
Yeah, how many, how many, who can vote on this? Tell us.
Von, John, Alexis, Rick, Michael, Louie, Andrew.
I didn't, I wasn't here last week.
No, not last week. I think this would be regional, regional.
Regional. And on the extension back on October 22nd, 2020.
Yeah, I remember that.
So you're eligible to vote on this.
So I'll make. Are there any questions? We go ahead and make a movement?
So I'll make a motion to, I'm sorry.
Any public questions from the public? Okay.
Who's he represent? I'm sorry, I missed that idea.
Okay.
1105 Main Street LLC. We're talking about the construction at the old Getty site on the corner of, is that Fourth and Main Street? Which is in progress, but we've changed some of the interior situations, which requires new permitting and new architectural designs. And we had an extension until the end of September, I believe. And we're asking for six months, we're asking for six months from then, just because we changed the type of tenant and the interior configuration.
Right. Then at the last meeting, it was approved to change tenants. And we just didn't want this to happen at that meeting because it wasn't allowed. So now we have to come to you. Right, it wasn't on the agenda, it wasn't allowed to do that. So here we are. Yep. All right.
I'll make the motion to approve.
So.
I'm fine.
Ivan.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We got the extension March 31st.
All right. Do we get a motion to close?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All right.
No, they were late. Don't worry about that.
Get home to Coco.